Yep. All right, everybody, welcome. It is six o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I'd like us if we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and will be led by Councilmember Tovar.
Hello, everybody. Please join me. Let me begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we could remain standing, we have an invocation led by Pastor Greg Quirk of South Valley Community Church.
Thank you, Pastor Quirk. Father, we come together this evening and I want to pray over this meeting tonight. There is always a weight of responsibility that our mayor and council carry when it comes to being leader in our community. Give them wisdom on making decisions, let their decisions and directives continue to strengthen the values of our great city. And if it's good on them. I pray, Lord, also for a special blessing upon all our city employees tonight. Help remind us to go out of our way to stop and thank those maintaining our streets, parks, those who will be on the other end of the phone when we have a medical crisis, as well as those powers of fireless to control our streets as we see it. Bless the city, we pray in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, everyone, be seated. Okay, City Clerks report on posting the agenda, followed by roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the posting of the agenda was conducted on Thursday, April fourteenth at four thirty PM. Roll call. Councilmember Almaderas is absent. Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lee Ramirez?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blenkley.
Here. Okay, I'd like to announce a public comment for items not on the agenda. Well, and for those on the agenda for that matter, if those wishing to speak tonight could please fill out a comment card, the yellow cards at either entrance, and hand them to the city clerk so that we're aware of who would like to be speaking and we can plan accordingly. All right, orders of the day, none. Employee introductions. Fire Department, Chief Wyatt.
How's that? Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce John Zaro. He's our latest firefighter paramedic, and I'll just give you a brief bio on him. John grew up in Davis and was involved in athletics his entire life. He went to UC Davis and graduated with a major in United States history and a minor in European studies. He's worked on an ambulance in central California for the past five years and for the past three years has worked as a reserve firefighter. He recently moved from San Luis Obispo to Sunnyvale. His family still lives in Davis, his mom and dad. His brother and sister live in the state of California elsewhere. His hobbies include golf and working out. And he's very excited and grateful to be here, and I'll let him go ahead and speak about himself a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to start my career here in Gilroy and serve the citizens of this community to the highest standard. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, Daryl from Public Works. And parks and street sewers. Sorry, you're on all of them. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm super excited tonight to have three people to bring before you tonight. First, I want to introduce Abraham Romero. Abraham joins the City of Gilroy as a maintenance worker with over eleven years of relevant experience and possesses a wealth of knowledge in soil fumigation. In receiving his qualified applicator's license, Abraham possesses superior knowledge in the application of pesticides and many other chemicals. In his previous experience, Abraham has applied this knowledge to various crops such as berries, almonds, potatoes, and floral nurseries, as well versed in county regulations and inspections. In addition to having a QAL, Abraham also possesses a Class A license with hazmat endorsements and has the ability to operate heavy equipment, drive semi trucks and tractors. Moreover, Abraham also went to YOTech Institute where he earned his credentials in applied automotive technology. So not only is he amazing in applying pesticides and chemicals, he's double amazing in fixing and maintaining the large semi trucks and equipment he operates to transport these chemicals. He's a total package for us, and now he's on our team here at the City of Gilroy. Outside of work, Abraham enjoys spending time with his wife and seven-year-old son. His hobbies include anything related to classic cars and watches pretty much all sports, but his favorite team is the Niners. Please welcome.
I'm happy to be here, excited for the opportunity that the City of Gilroy has given me, and I'm ready to grow with the City of Gilroy.
Thank you. Welcome.
Our next employee is Joseph Garcia. He's just a flat-out talented, gifted, and fine young man who has an incredible bright future ahead of him. Joseph joins our agency in our Parks and Landscapes unit within Public Works. In addition to his work that he'll be doing with the City of Gilroy, within the past seven years, Joseph has climbed the ranks to Sergeant in the Army Reserves, Civil Affairs Specialist, which he currently is active. He started his career in maintenance as a cement mason, learning how to smooth out all aspects of pump maintenance, repairing and replacing water lines, storm drains, and sewer laterals. When it comes to tools, he too is a jack of all trades and can operate a wide range of hand mechanical and power tools. Earning his Class A license, Joseph can also operate vector trucks, dump trucks, and other various heavy equipment trailers. Please help me welcome him to the city.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, Stephen Wilson. Stephen Wilson joins the City of Gilroy in our Streets, Sewers, and Wastewater team with our Public Works section. His unique combination of skills includes automotive technology and mechanics, sewer streets maintenance, hand tool wizardry, and has a thorough knowledge of various wastewater systems. Prior to beginning his career in the public sector, Stephen held leadership roles in the automotive industry in which he worked in for twenty years and gained mastery with induction systems. In his stint with the City of San Jose, Stephen maintained and repaired numerous water systems that included storm drains, sanitation pumps. However, in addition to wastewater, Stephen is incredibly versatile and has also worked in parks and landscapes and is skilled in weed abatement and tree maintenance, not to mention some experience in building maintenance as well. Stephen has his Class A license and has experience operating vector trucks, dump trucks, crane trucks, and much more. Stephen possesses a boatload of knowledge, skills, and experience that ultimately and most importantly benefits the residents of Gilroy. Outside of work, Stephen enjoys spending time with his wife Bianca and Stephanie back over here in the right corner. He's a motorcycle enthusiast and incorporates anything automotive relative to his hobbies. Please help me welcome him.
I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the City of Gilroy and to grow with the City of Gilroy as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, welcome all. All right, thank you. Ceremonial items, item two, we have none. Under item three, Presentations to the Council, three point one, we have Visit Gilroy's Annual Report from Jane Howard.
Good evening. You're just such a joy to be here in person. I said I want to wait till we actually get to see each other, so thank you. And I'm here to share the joys of what visitors bring to Gilroy, not only from the experience of what we share with when they come to Gilroy, but also the revenue drivers that help our community. So we shall move forward with that. So tonight I'm going to talk about the About Visit Gilroy, our economic impact report from Visit California, our advertising and marketing that we did in twenty-one, our highlights from twenty-one, and our challenges and opportunities in twenty-two. So, basic mission statement, I sent all of you this PowerPoint earlier, so you all are so prepared, and I don't have to go through every line item, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. If you notice, we've got seventeen board members. That is an incredibly huge board for any organization, especially a DMO, a destination marketing organization. But we believe strongly that it's important that our community is well represented in this hospitality industry. So you can see that we have an incredible group here that does represent us. And I want to point out on our staff here, our visitor service manager Pam Jimenez. Pam's in the audience tonight, and I want to recognize her with the incredible amount of service she has provided this organization and this community. Pam started her twenty-fourth year in this industry on March first, and I want to acknowledge that, so. Pam has probably welcomed more visitors to this community than anybody else, so she's seen and heard it all. Okay, let's talk about some economic impacts. Visit California didn't have the twenty-twenty-one data yet, but I do want to show you what exactly happened with twenty-twenty. Just a reminder, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty, everything stopped. And things did not actually get started again until June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one. So, in that, obviously, the industry, the hospitality industry took a big hit. And you can see just in travel-related spending, fifty-five percent year-over-year change, twenty-twenty state and local tax revenue, fifty percent drop year-over-year, and then our travel-related employment. And just to give you a sense of how significant this COVID impact was in the hospitality industry, it was ten times more than nine eleven. So that says volumes. So what do we do during all this? Visit Gilroy was a key partner with the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Gilroy in several campaigns to help locally, to help drive visitation and just support our local businesses. But we also did some things in twenty-one that was out to start letting folks know about visiting Gilroy. And that included being at the Bay Area Travel Show and then the work that we do with the Central Coast Tourism Council. That is the organization, one of nine rural regions that we belong to. I'm a past president, serve in the Board of Directors. They're a key partner with us, and that's how we can participate in activities like the Yosemite Journal, Sunset Magazine, California Road Trips, and the California Visitor Guide. We also are always a part of the GMH Magazine. And then we also do a lot of partnerships with the Gilroy Premium Outlets. As you know, we're located out there, so if you want to see some amazing window clings, we've always got some out there, usually in Building A. This year, for the first time, too, Visit California offered fifty percent support to do some targeted Expedia campaigns to help drive overnight stays in this latter part of twenty-one. We participated in that and had some great responses in terms of actual bookings for our hotels. So, how did things look? We went back to twenty-nineteen. That was the benchmark. That was the year that was the end-all of end-all. Visit California, all of our numbers were amazing. You can see in terms of our unique website visitors, in terms of our walk-ins at the Welcome Center, our highlights from our website visitation, and all the collateral distributed, you can just see that incredible numbers, the hit that we took in twenty-twenty, and then coming out of it into twenty-one. These are all data points that we track on a regular basis, and we want to make sure council sees what those look like. Okay, key part. As you know, we are funded both by the City of Gilroy to operate the Welcome Center and do local marketing, and then by a Tourism Business Improvement District. That particular Tourism Business Improvement District is funded by the hotels with a two percent assessment on visitors that stay here. When we look at key data for the hotels, that hotel RevPAR is the number that the hotels look for. It's not about occupancy. As one hotel, you said, I can be a hundred percent full, but if I'm only getting six dollars a room, it doesn't matter. I mean, that was kind of his laughter about it, but the point is, how much are you making per available room? That's what hotel RevPAR is, and we track that. And again, this is all important data that we can see how things are working as we're promoting Gilroy as an overnight destination. Some other highlights, for the first time, we brought digital influencers to Gilroy. As you know, that's kind of the cutting edge now. You bring folks who, actually, that's what they do for a living. They come visit our community and then use all their social media channels to tell folks about what they're experiencing. And then they're sharing that with followers that may not be followers of Visit Gilroy. So we reached over twenty thousand new people through our digital influencer campaign. We did a website audit. As you know, the ADA compliance is very, very important. We finished that, and that was huge to get completed, and that is all done. We updated our visitor map, and then we also, our Gilroy Taco Trail. You know, what do we have in Gilroy? We have a lot of taco places. So the Taco Trail has had amazing following, and we just keep playing on that. We hired a new Tourism Community Engagement Coordinator who works about thirty hours a week to coordinate, not only for our local businesses, to help support whether it's the wine stroll or whether it's a car show, but also she'll do trade shows and things like that for us. And then also, as you know, Visit Gilroy and Chamber of Commerce were co-leads on the EDP initiatives. And then your Spice Guide, which I gave each one of you, that's our brand-new twenty-twenty-two Spice Visitor Guide. You know, we had a lot of conversation with our marketing team, Articulate Solutions, do we print or not? But what we have seen post-COVID, people are just coming to the Welcome Center and they're just gathering. You know, they ask Pam for a bag, like they want something in their hands, and they want to be inspired again to go out and do things, and they want it in print. I think they're kind of, you know, zoned out. They're so tired of screens, so they actually want print. So in addition to being online, we printed twenty-five-hundred again this year. And of course, we are And of course, we are, we operate and staff a California Welcome Center led by Pam and her team 363 days a year. We're very proud of that. I think Gilroy can be proud of that. We're only one of 21 in this state, and we really appreciate the support and the council understanding how important that is to recognize when you've got a Welcome Center, how that is not only supported with your funding, but what Visit California does for us too. So what do we have ahead? When I was talking to the marketing team and also my board chair who's here tonight, you know, I said, "We got to talk about the real world here," because '22 has some interesting challenges, but I also see them as, as possible opportunities. And I think I'll start with inflation and the gas prices. We receive every two weeks a report from destination analysts who surveys about 4,000 travelers each, every two weeks, actually. And this particular report that I just saw in early April talked about the, the impact of these increasing gas prices for road trips. And what they found is that of these 4,000 travelers, about 55% said they're going to go ahead and still travel, but they're going to travel, they're going to take fewer trips and shorter distances, which means this staycation thing might come back because they're saying if this gas price continues the way it is, it's going to impact their decisions about what they're going to, what they're going to travel with. The inflation issues also, you know, we're probably going to have to talk to the city in the future about the funding that we receive because we've been receiving $300,000 since 2011 to operate, and that's great, we appreciate that, but unfortunately, events who come up, I know Mayor, but everybody else has got the cost of living. So it'll, it'll be discussed, probably when I'm not here, but. So let's talk about the war in the Ukraine and the general geopolitical unrest. What that is doing for our particular situation for travel, because there's an unsettling field for a lot of people not to want to travel to Europe right now, they're going to be staying domestic. And then they're also, because they, they say, "Well, what do we really feel comfortable doing?" It's very much in-state yet, and also a market that we're tapping into heavily is Canada. Canadians used to do a lot of travel to, to Europe, and we actually just launched a Canadian campaign through our T-Bit because the Canadians love coming down here through the Central Coast, and they start, they come into San Jose, San Francisco, and then start traveling through our, through our area. So we're taking advantage of that. The ongoing threat of new COVID, you know, who knows? You know, right now, it's looking okay, but it can change. I saw the mandate on, on masks has been, I think a judge said was overruling that, but it's a changing world, we'll see what happens there. And the homeless encampments in our entrances to our city are, is a real deal. People comment on it. So I am so excited. You know, we've got the Quality of Life Officers that I've met recently who are so, such an asset to this community and how they're dealing with that, and the Ad-Hoc Committee, the work that you did dealing with this. Most communities are dealing with this kind of problem, so we're not the only ones, but we recognize that whatever Visit Gilroy can do to help support whatever initiatives Gilroy can do to help with that situation, we're here. So call upon us. The hospitality workforce shortage, this is something that Visit California is really working on because, as you know, you know, not just in hospitality, but the general, you know, inability to get positions filled is really a challenge, and in the hospitality industry, we're really seeing it. And I heard something very innovative recently because I think some of those answers in terms of how we'll deal with that has to come from the hospitality industry. And one particular restaurant I heard about was actually providing daycare for their employees so that the employees would stay with them. So they paid for it, they provided it, and the employees said, "We felt good about it, and we're not going to leave this particular restaurant." It was innovative. And so I think there's going to have to be some new ways of how you keep your hospitality industry, and wages will be part of it, but it's also, as I mentioned, even dealing with the housing, that, you know, where do they live? So I think we've actually got some possibilities there, and Visit Gilroy, again, in coordination with Visit California and US Travel, we've got some initiatives that we'll be sharing with you about how we can bring that forward for our own community. And then finally, we do have a transition coming up. Now, as you know, I did announce my retirement on June 30th, but I have my board chair here tonight, Vic Bonney, and he's going to share a little bit about how this transition is going to be seamless, and we can all feel confident it's just going to move forward and take Gilroy to the next level. So Vic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I am Vic Bonney. I am the chairman of the board for the Visit Gilroy. And yes, we are going through some transition, leadership transition. You probably know, back in December, Jane announced her retirement, and she was kind enough to give us six months or more to find a replacement for her. So we've been in that process. You know, Jane's been around 17 years on this, on this particular, as the executive director for Visit Gilroy, and losing her, as you probably can, can realize, is a huge, huge loss, and is going to be very difficult to fill her shoes. Her passion for Gilroy and just her selflessness and all that she's done and the way she collaborates with, with everyone in such, she has all the skills that we're, that we need, and so losing her is going to be, is going to be interesting. Anyways, we did have in place a succession plan outline. Thankfully, Jane, several years ago, directed the board to put something together, so we have a map that kind of leads us through these six months that we're going to, to replace, put somebody in her position. We have established our committee, so we have a succession plan committee that's been meeting twice a month or so since December. And we've come to an agreed salary range that we're going to throw out there to prospective staff. And we also have hired Michelle Carlin, who is with Alignment Advising. She is basically our headhunter, seeking and doing a lot of the filtering of resumes and some of the heavy, heavy lifting for us. So she's been doing that process for the last couple of months. We are supposed to be receiving and screening applicants completely through April 29th, that's our deadline. So April 29th is about 10 days away. And from there, Michelle will then suggest four finalists. And so by May 13th, we should have four finalists coming to us. I understand that we have about 35 or so resumes thus far, which is pretty darn good, I think. So I'm very optimistic. Interviews will be completed by May 26th, so when we do get the four, we will go through interview process with members of our board and probably members of the community also. And then finally, the recommendation will come to our Board of Directors on June 16th with the hopes of having somebody in place by August 1st. And Jane has been kind enough to allow us an extra couple of months to stick around in case we can't find someone in the timely manner that we need to. And she also is going to be available for us to help train and transition. So we really appreciate that. We couldn't do it, I don't think, very well without her. I know we couldn't. There's no question. Anyways, that's our status, and if you have any questions for myself or for Jane, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Vic. Thank you. Yes, thank you both for your report. Council members, does anyone, are there any questions from anybody for either? Okay, we thank, thank you for a very, very well-done presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jane. Okay, moving on to item 3.2. This is the, the time on the agenda for anyone who wants to speak on, on an item that's not on the agenda. So I'm going to pause and ask again that anybody wishing to speak at this point of the meeting, please make sure you have a card handed in to our city clerk. And also, if you are speaking at this point on the agenda, would you please come and sit in one of these front rows? Okay, that way we know you're, you're going to be speaking at this time on the agenda. So I will wait for people to move up to the front rows if they want to speak. And then Ty will ask how many cards you have?
I've received five speaker cards, Madam Mayor. The first one is Ruben Medina, followed by Karen Fortino.
Okay, so Ruben, if you would like to go ahead and make your way, and again, I'm going to ask anybody who is planning to speak at this section of the agenda to please move into the front two rows, front rows. And there will be a timer in front of each of you to please be mindful of, of the time as you're speaking so that you have the opportunity to say everything that you would like to say.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Yes, my name is Ruben Medina, and I've come here to complain based on concerns and safety issues with the, at a cemetery. There's no restrooms. People are urinating in the, behind the bushes in headstones. There's no facility for handicapped people, no ramps, no, nothing, no sidewalks, no railing for getting and out, no handicap parking. If you walk on this, on the road, you're going to trip over the checkholes. They're so bad, it's pathetic. It looks like a landfill for people. It doesn't look like a cemetery. I asked about, complained about that to the Habey family. My answer was, very specifically, he told me, "Go someplace else." Is this the way, is this the way we're going to handle this problem? I mean, there's got to be bathrooms out there somewhere. What do the workers do? I asked the worker, he said, "We don't have any." Either he doesn't want me to use the restroom, or they don't have any. He told me to go to Safeway or McDonald's. And that's not right. That's not right at all. I'll leave you with that, see what, what direction the council will take and help fix that cemetery. It's disgusting, and body, bodies are not the option. If you're going to put something, do something right, or do it like it is. We continue, they continued urinating in the walls and, and headstones. I went to see my wife two weeks ago on my little electric scooter, and I got up to where she was, where she's put her dress. The next building has a little fence about, about this high, maybe four feet. There was two guys against the building between, behind the fence, and a little boy could see his head, and they were up there, standing up against the wall. And I just sat there and looked at them, and they were locked. I, I looked at them, and they, he just put his head down, walked away. I think that's disgusting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker?
Karen Fortino, followed by Mr. Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council and guests. I come up here just with a concern for the City Council. I'm not sure if this is the correct place to address my concern, but about the last two years, I've been helping organizations in the area help find lost pets. So if a pet goes missing, it gets posted on several different, you know, social media sites, and we go out and we try to find these lost pets. And when it's before out, you know, before 6:00 PM, we have a great solution. We have a beautiful new shelter in San Martin, which we can then bring the animals to, which is great. However, I have experienced over the last couple of weeks that not everything happens before 6:00 PM. So I guess my concern is, is that after 6:00 PM, we then called the non-emergency line, which, very responsive. However, this past week, we had a little situation with an animal that was not being very cooperative. We then had to call out a Gilroy police officer to come out and assist, and I'm sure they're busy with, obviously, very important things with the city. So I was just wondering if there's any place that any of you can offer to suggest for me to point me in the correct direction of after-hours animal rescue? I know that we do have volunteers with the city. However, is, is there a training process that they go through? Is that something that I could get involved with? Because obviously, with animals that don't want to be put into a cage or whatever the situation is, and then what do we do with them after the 6:00 PM hour? Just bringing up that concern, if any of you have any solutions that you could offer to me that I could further help with? Because we really, our goal is just to get the animals back to their proper owner. Wasn't sure if you had any suggestions for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker?
Mr. Ron Kirkish, followed by Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administrator, and Mr. Faber. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Faber. I understand he was the person who recommended the agency that did the investigation, and you did a very good job. I brought this up today because I don't know if everybody has seen this, but this is the most recent Dispatch article, and it shows the headline. And this is the effort, this is the end product of the efforts of the group that Mr. Faber recommended and the city hired at a cost of $47,000 to the Gilroy taxpayers. This is really sad news, and it's news that we expected. And I'm going to keep it short but sweet, but there's a lot of people in this city now that have read this and are very concerned about a certain individual, and maybe even two individuals who are typically sitting on our days that should not be there. That's my belief. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jonathan, followed by Cheryl Parks, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan. I'm an Army veteran, a security director, and more importantly, a father of three young children, one of which is seven months old. And I'm a resident and a homeowner of Gilroy. I'm here to present a public safety issue that we believe the city helped to create a long time ago and is responsible to help solve. I'd like to partner with you, the City Council, and I've brought some thoughtful solutions. I'm hoping that you will add this to your next City Council agenda. There's a stretch of road behind our neighborhood, which is commonly referred to as the hideout. It's a part of the Uves Park Drive Street between Third and Laurel Drive, and it's in the western part of the city. It's near the Santa Teresa and Third Street Roundabout. It's called the hideout because it's a hotspot for overnight crime, drug dealing, illegal fireworks, dumping, and many other safety concerns. It's actually the entrance to the Devil, Devil Uves Creek Trail, and because of the way that the city planned and built this section of road, it's very secluded, and it's the perfect place to hide out. It was never connected to the rest of the road that follows the levee, which the city originally planned to do, but it hasn't been completed. It's also where many come to interface with the unsheltered people who live in the creek and conduct illegal activities, unfortunately. Last year, a stolen vehicle was parked there and set on fire. On a daily basis, there are vehicles parked overnight, creating noise disturbances, trash, setting off illegal fireworks. It's also the very same stretch of road where the Garlic Festival shooter used to park and hide his, his car and his weapons. Our neighborhood collects bags of trash from this area behind our homes weekly to include hundreds of cigarette butts, lighters, batteries, unfortunately, used condoms, drug paraphernalia such as needles, et cetera. Many of the issues in our city start in areas like the one I've just mentioned, and I think it speaks to the safety of our community at large and what we can do about it. I've come up with some simple solutions that vary in cost, but are overall inexpensive. The first one, install signage in the area to limit parking to four hours and no parking from sunset to sunrise. Increase police patrols on this section of road because it is a hotspot for illegal activity. Issue traffic citations instead of warnings for those that violate the parking. And possibly to install surveillance cameras and systems to monitor the area as a deterrent. We believe that these, this issue and these solutions are low-hanging fruit that can produce tangible results. We believe this could also be a model that the city could use for other places around.
Sir, I have to call your attention to the time?
Okay, let me just finish with this statement. My daughter is a kindergartner at El Roble Elementary, and her biggest fear in life is that one of the bad men from behind her home will hop the wall and break into our home, and this is a nightly thing that we deal with because of the noise.
I have to stop you, because otherwise I'll have to allow it for everybody.
No problem.
I am sorry.
Hopefully, you can consider this at the next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next speaker?
Cheryl Parks.
And that's final speaker?
Correct.
Okay.
I realize that Councilmember Armand Diaz isn't here, but I know she'll be watching, so I will go ahead and let, say what I have to say. Councilmember Armand Diaz is a nonprofit community agency for resources, advocacy, and services. We're part of- We're part of the South County Collaborative that spearheaded the passage of Gilroy's social host ordinance. Before this group got together, Gilroy didn't have one. For their efforts, this collaborative, in which Councilmember Armandias is nonprofit, was a member of, in 2008, they won a $600,000 three-year federal grant. For passing the social host, getting towns like Gilroy, Morgan Hill, I can't remember the other ones, to pass this ordinance. This is the same ordinance that she violated. She was keenly aware of what was on the social host ordinance. And I would like to ask Councilman Armandias to do the correct thing and resign. Our community needs to move on. I realize that she didn't intend for what happened to happen, but it did. And I would like her to do the right thing, and that is to resign.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? One last time?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then I'm going to close this portion of the agenda and move on. I'm gonna move on to Councilmember reports. For those of you who are asking for some kind of action from the council or some kind of information, if you would please email, it would be easier to be able to respond to you via email. You can email me if you're worried about who to email, or Jimmy, one of the two. Anyone who spoke tonight asking for some information, okay? Please, please handle it that way. All right, thank you. Councilmember reports, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I wanted to report that I've been receiving calls about the hours at the library and some questions about the library. This past week, the Finance Committee, which I'm a member of, met and approved the upcoming budget, which will be adding in hours, will get back to pre-COVID. So that is going to the full board on Wednesday. So you should be seeing the hours bumped up pretty quick. And then for those that have seen construction going on at the library, the library district is paying to have an outdoor covered patio installed so that people can sit out when the weather's nice and sit outside instead of being cooped up inside the building. So that's gonna be real nice. Financially, we're very good. We have $24 million in building reserves and $25 million in our operating reserve. So our libraries, the Santa Clara County Library System is doing very well. And I'll let the mayor tell us about the Water District. I forgot my notes.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Marks.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The Gilroy Downtown Business Association had a wonderful event this past Saturday, Garlic Palooza. They were a little dawned by rain in the morning, but it did open on time at 12:00 noon. And there were many food trucks, they had a band, there was arts and crafts, and a beer and wine booth. So they had a nice little turnout considering the weather, and all went well. They have an upcoming wine stroll on June 4th downtown with all local wineries, so please plan on supporting that. Also, I was last Friday at the mural unveiling at Sixth Street Studios. Armando Flores and a group of student muralists and artists painted this mural. And it depicts a lot of our iconic places or parts of our history. It's a beautiful mural, and I really applaud Armando and his artists for the gorgeous work they did. And three of the large parts of the mural I was very intrigued with, it was the basket tree from Gilroy Gardens. It was the rodeo rider on the horse, and it was Old City Hall. The three main pictures were the problem with the time capsule. And I'm very glad that even though we can't show the time capsule here, at least they're immortalized on the wall of a private building. So thank you, Armando, and your students. And that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. In our last council meeting, I gave a report in regards to our gourmet alley and downtown ad hoc committee that was established. We are set to have another meeting tomorrow, and we are working hard to come up with a really good plan moving forward. And as mentioned, we will get input from the community and from stakeholders as well. And one of the things I and I know others are pushing is a vacant building ordinance. You know, because now's the time. We gotta do something about those vacant buildings, and it's time for us to get tough on that. So hopefully, we'll have more discussion on that tomorrow and see what we can do to get more businesses in our downtown. I want to thank my fellow council members, community members, and also the Gilroy Chamber for all the work that you guys are doing and for being out there supporting our businesses. I see them at many, many different events. But I will plead to the community that please go out and support our local businesses and restaurants, shop local. Because my conversation with many of the restaurants is, sometimes they're doing well, but other nights, they're struggling. You know, so I plead to you, before you decide to go to another city, another town, check out what we have downtown because there's so much going on. We have a lot of new business coming up. Several of my friends are opening up businesses downtown, and I ask that you please come out and support us. Thank you.
Councilmember LaRomen Yos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item, the Gilroy Economic Development Council had a meeting last week where we discussed and ultimately took a vote to dissolve the GEDC. As people might be aware, the city has stopped funding the GEDC. We did that back in 2019. Given kind of the circumstances the GEDC found itself in in terms of not having an executive director at that time back in 2019, and some of the other financial realities of running an organization like that, they looked to the Gilroy Chamber, which stepped in very ably to help that. But ultimately, the decision was to dissolve the GEDC. I sit on that group as the council representative along with Councilmember Tovar. So now the GEDC is gonna be looking at engaging with an attorney to determine what can be done with the remaining assets, whether they can be handed over to the chamber to continue the chamber's work or whether they have to go back to, you know, from whence they came, I guess. So it's still to be determined what that's gonna be. But the big takeaway is that the GEDC will be dissolving formally soon. Next, the Water District had its quarterly meeting last week. As people are no doubt aware, Q1 this year was the driest Q1 we've ever had in the Bay Area and our region here. Our local, excuse me, our snowpack for the state is actually about 19% of capacity. So significantly lower than where we need it to be. If we are going to see enhanced conservation measures to be taken by the Valley Water District, those will most likely come before summer when we can kind of reap the largest gains from those conservation efforts. One final item, just something that I saw on social media, and I just want to take a moment to correct it. There's a town hall on April 26th with a congressional candidate. I just wanted to be clear that despite what that might say online, I'm not hosting that, nor am I gonna be participating in that. So I just wanted to clarify that in case there was any confusion there. But that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, on my report, I'll start with the South County Joint Water Advisory Committee, which is what Councilmember Bracco was referring to. And the one thing of note is, we have a new chairperson for that committee, and it's our very own Representative John Varela. So it's kind of nice to have our representative be the chair. Unfortunately, I'm the vice chair. So not sure how that, yeah, came to be, but that's how it is for now. And we are working diligently. That committee meets once a quarter. It is some of these same people who are on the Scrub Board, our water sewer treatment plant, all in an effort to figure out what to do about the water shortage and how can we better or produce even more recycled water, and what about purified water? How are we going to bring purified water to South County? It already exists in some places to the north, and so those are the things that we are in discussion about, and you can't do those things too soon. The other thing I wanted to mention is with respect to transportation, because this, I think, is a little bit exciting. Councilmember LaRomen Yos and I sit on the Mobility Partnership. And the Mobility Partnership is a partnership of South Santa Clara County and North San Benito County. And we are, so it's VTA, but only for South Santa Clara County, and the San Benito County Governments, I think is what they call themselves. And so together, we look at mutual interests for transportation for all of us. And we just recently signed letters of support for funding to Congressman Panetta's office, because that's the district that these things are in. And one is to request the funding now needed for Phase Two of the design and environmental clearance work for the 101-25 interchange, specifically the Santa Teresa Boulevard connection. Because as some of you may know, that project is doing away with the Castro Valley connection to 101. And we're not, you know, in love with the alternatives. So we're coming up with these other things, and that's what this is. It's the Santa Teresa Boulevard Extension Project, Phase Two, and that's something I wanted to share that we're looking at getting funding for, and I think we have a good shot. And the other is putting on the radar, so get ready, I'm glad everybody's sitting down, widening 101 south of Cochrane. And that's something that we are requesting $2 million to help VTA begin the initial work that starts setting the stage for that. It would be an express lanes, electronic toll systems infrastructure, that's technically what it's called, to go from Cochrane, and we would like to see it go all the way to 25. So that when the 25 interchange is improved, you know, there's no bottleneck. That's the issue is the bottlenecks that's there now. So wanted to share that information with everyone, and with that, we can move on. All right, item five, future council-initiated agenda items. Do we have any?
I have one, Mayor.
Okay.
Some of the businesses downtown are very concerned about the cars cruising up and down on Saturday nights once a month. And so they would like to request that the council have a discussion to see if there is something that we would like to do, whether it be a no-cruising zone or whatever the council's wishes would be. So could we agendacize that for a future meeting?
Go ahead.
Sorry. And I respect what Councilmember Marks is saying. You know, I've heard differently as well. So I mean, I've heard several businesses saying that it generates a lot of people there. But I do also believe that we need to have some regulations, you know, because it does get out of control. But for us to completely wipe out any events that go through our downtown, I would not be in favor of. But I would be in favor of trying to find a way to control those events.
Okay, my thought is, have you, I mean, we can't discuss it, but my thought is it first should be a discussion with staff to find out what is it that can be done that isn't being done? Is it necessary to come to council with it yet?
Well, we have, and apparently, there's no answer from staff about what can be done. I guess downtown was under the impression that they had a no-cruising zone, but then staff seems to think, no, there isn't one. So we're in this big dilemma of what to do. And I know I'm getting a lot of complaints from restaurant owners and other businesses that have to put up with some of the antics that are going on down there. And it's not making these business owners very happy, so.
Do you have a comment? Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What we could do for council is give you what our current regulations are, what our rules are, and what is possible to incorporate as ordinances. But I can tell you that most of the activity that we do hear about is protected. There's nothing wrong with driving a vehicle downtown. And we do ask businesses that if there is a crime committed or something that occurs, that they call the police. So those are the two things that we state to all of our businesses now, but we could certainly bring something to council to discuss.
Yeah, I guess it's time to thumbs up or thumbs down. I personally am not inclined to add additional thing formally to the agenda. You have a comment?
Yeah, I don't support this. Just because I don't think I'm being disciplined.
Yeah, that's where I'm going to, unfortunately. I wish there were an opportunity to discuss it privately first, just to know what, to better understand what you're getting at, but we're here now, so. I don't support it coming back as an agenda item. If Jimmy's okay putting it in his city administrator's report one time, I don't know that that's something we need to approve. That would be something for Jimmy to just do. If he wishes.
Well, would it help if I was a little bit more specific on what the actual complaints are?
No, not at this, because you can't.
Yeah, I know, we can't discuss it.
I mean, maybe there's still a majority. Councilmember Bracco and I are not, no, okay, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. Moving on to item six, which is the consent calendar. First, I'm gonna ask if there is any item on this consent calendar, because there are seven of them, that anyone from the council would like to remove. All right, then I'd like to ask for public comment, if there's any.
I'd receive no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
Councilmember Armandias is absent. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember LaRomen Yos?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes. All right, item 7.1, under bids and proposals. Award a contract to NorCal Contractor for the Eagleberry and Seventh Parking Lot Project, number 20PW444, and approve a project expenditure of $2,310,000. And this staff report is going to be by Daryl. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council. Mr. Heap couldn't be here tonight. He was under the weather, so he apologized for not being here tonight. I do have one of my star staff members here, though, tonight, sitting right back here. She spent weekends and evenings trying to get these projects out the door. So I'm glad she's able to make it here tonight, so. Anyway, let's go and get started with the first one. Tonight, we're discussing the award contract to NorCal Contractor for the, finally, the Eagleberry and Seventh Street Parking Lot Project. We've been waiting for this for a long time. Yeah. A little bit of background here. January 27th of 2020, council approved to apply for $1.5 million in funding towards the design and construction of this project. September of that year, council awarded a contract with BKF Engineers for a quarter million dollars to design the project. BKF prepared the design for three alternatives, which were shared with the council and stakeholders. With this project, there was a lot of project outreach. The three BKF alternatives received input from or ran through the GDBA on the February of 2021. Chamber of Commerce took a swing at it too in February of 2021. BPC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee in February of 21. And then City Council also weighed in in April of 2021. Just a minor note there, at that time, we were estimated about a $2.1 million cost at that time last year in April. And then finally, we had a community outreach meeting in April as well. Consensus with the council was to proceed with design alternative number two at this point. This is alternative two. If you can see this on the screen up there, basically, the parking lot layout, all the amenities that are gonna be involved and constructed with the project. A little more background, the projects, this project includes 140 spaces, surface parking lot for the area, which is fantastic for our downtown, associated signing and striping that go along with that, a lot of concrete flatwork, ADA-compliant curbs and ramps throughout. In the middle, you'll see a bioretention facility and drainage infrastructure for storm drainage. We've also had electric vehicles EV charging stations added as well, including lighting and landscaping for the project. The bid process, we advertised in the San Jose Mercury News on our city website, March 18th, and the newspaper. Our bids were open just this month, April 5th, not long ago. We received six bids. The lowest responsive bidder was NorCal, the NorCal Contractor. The project costs for the base bid were $1.7 million. We had two alternatives with that, the EV charging station and bike racks. Alternative one being $102,000, bid alternative two being $30,000. The total bid combined is approximately $1.8 million with a 10% contingency, creating a total there of $2,800,000. If you add in the design costs that we had at the beginning with that, the total allocation would be $2.3... the total allocation would be $2.3 million, which again, originally, council was thinking $2.1. So we're about 200 over what we thought we were going to be at about a year ago. Our funding sources to support this project is our capital project fund, about 1.8 facilities, internal service funds of about 300, and our gas tax funds of $250,000 to equate to the total of $2.3 million. Recommendation tonight is that this council adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year 2122, and appropriate proposed expenditure amendments. Also award a contract to NorCal Contractor in the amount of $1.825,485.38 with an additional project contingency of $182,549, for a total construction cost of $2,834,000, and a $301,966 for costs associated with design permitting and advertising for a total project cost of $2,310,000 for this Eagleberry and Seventh Parking Lot Project. The project number is 20PUBLICWORKS-444, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. And I'll be here with any questions you may have tonight.
Thank you, Daryl. Okay, they're lining up, so I'll start with Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Daryl, thank you for this report, first of all. You're going to hear me say it over and over, I'm glad that it's a local company.
Yes, thank you, yes.
So I appreciate that. I'm just looking at all the companies that submitted a bid, and they're all local. So that was great to see. But when you look at bid number one for NorCal and then the second one, it's quite a bit of difference in regards to.
Right.
Why was that? I'm just curious.
You know, that's a great question. They all have to come up with their own numbers to be competitive. Right now, we're seeing a huge variability in labor costs. We learned at a conference just this last month that of every 12 heavy construction workers that are retiring, there's one replacing them in California right now. So there's a huge shortage of labor out there that we're seeing across the board. With the skyrocketing oil prices, that translates to asphalt as well. Asphalt follows the prices of oil very closely. So we're going to be seeing that as well as the asphalt prices.
Good, and I thank you. And the reason I was asking that question, obviously, just wanted to sort of get some more insight. But sometimes folks think that the quality of work isn't going to be the same, because, but that's not the case.
That's not the case. The specifications are precise for any contractor who's going to do the work, and we'll make sure we hold them to that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember LaRoma Yose.
Daryl, I think I share a lot of the excitement that many of us feel in this room, that we're taking a very concrete step, no pun intended, towards getting this project, you know, moving along. You know, when we took the last step of doing this, this was, it was pre-pandemic, so obviously, very different world. What is NorCal's thought in terms of the timeline? Because I know a lot of people are going to be here and listening, and they're going to say, oh, great, this is going to be there, you know, six months from now. What are we realistically looking at, just ballparking about when we can expect construction to begin and when a completed timeline might be in place?
Those are great questions. Ms. Julie, who's here with us tonight, was just reviewing that schedule with me. The goal is to get them started before the summer, so within the next month or two, to get them mobilized and out on the site, and to have it completed by December end of the year. That's their schedule that we're looking at right now. I want to see them put that in writing to make sure.
I was going to say, that's awfully ambitious, but if they're confident, then I'll be confident in them.
Right, it's very ambitious, and you never know what type of weather you're going to hit in the fourth quarter that can delay some of those, so.
Understood, so by end of year is the cautious.
Cautious, so I would probably tell you first quarter next year.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. Thank you, Daryl.
All right, Councilmember Rocco.
I'll go first, if you want.
Okay, okay, I've got some comments, too, but I'll let you go a second time, go ahead.
Thank you, and I know my colleague, Councilmember Rocco will remember, so. But a colleague to the left asked a wonderful question in regards to timeline, and I want to follow up with that. The impact of traffic and parking, especially in that area there. I know over the last few months, we've had some work done in that area, and it's really impacted sort of parking for the businesses there. What's the plan for that? Because I think the concern that I and others had were that the company that was out there doing the work, were parking all their vehicles where, I mean, we only have a limited number of parking spots, and they were taking all the parking spots. And so some of the restaurants were really upset about that, so.
Great point. One of our biggest impacts was the parking in the alleyway itself. Staging vehicles, staging equipment, to where we couldn't get the different, the different vehicles up and down there that they needed for deliveries and what have you. In this case, this project is not rebuilding the alleyway. The Gourmet Alley Project, which we'll talk about at some future stage, is actually going to be tackling that issue. So we will not be in the alleyway, per se, on the project. And with as much of room as you see out there in that existing parking lot, all the demolition, there's going to be a lot of room to stage right there on site or neighboring the site and staying away from the businesses. So our goal will be to keep them away from downtown business and push them as far away as we can.
Excellent, yeah, good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rocco, do you remember? Okay.
On the, when I was reading it, I thought I read that EV charging stations aren't going to be put in just the infrastructure?
They are going to be installed with the project as an alternate if you choose tonight.
So they are going to be done complete?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is that, are we going to generate income off of those?
We can, we can have that discussion with our city administrator and with you at a later date. There's an opportunity for that. Most agencies right now are just covering their costs for the citizens, but if you wanted to increase that, that's a discussion that we can have at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Rocco, members of the council, one issue that we will bring to you at some point is our parking control program. With new parking lots, become great opportunities, but also become challenges on how you enforce, how you ensure that you recover costs and items like that. So actually, on our work plan that we have for the two-year budget cycle, it is the parking enforcement program, and so you'll be seeing that in the fall.
And that'll be citywide?
Yes.
Okay, great. And does, what Councilmember Rocco was just asking, you said that's in the alternative, is that part of the $2.3 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's included in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my comments, I just wanted to do a little bit, a little trip down memory lane for the public who's watching this. This started at just an estimate without any bids by anybody at $1,005,000, when council initially approved parking lot there. It was for, what we approved was funding of $1.5 million, and we had hoped it was going to be closer to 200 parking spaces for that. What came back to us in April was $2.1 million and 140 spaces. I mean, it's beautiful, but that was a big difference. It went from, even at 140 spaces, it went from $10,000 per parking space to $15,000 per parking space at the $2.1. And now it's at $16,500, just shy of $16,500 per parking space. So back in April of '21, as I recall, I was the only one who did not approve this going forward because the cost was just too much. But the council approved it, so here we are. And now for the difference between $2.1 and $2.3, I certainly am not going to vote against it. So it's there now, this is what it is. And I really like that we have this $3.9 million grant that is going to come in after we make this mess and pave over the alleyway, kind of like we did on First Street. And I also remember, one last thing, when we discussed this back in April of 2021, making sure that the neighbors, everybody who lived within a certain proximity of the area was in fact notified of what the plan was, and I know that that has been done. So we should be in a good position at this point, I think. Are there any other comments from the council?
I'd like to move for approval.
Well, I got to go to the public first, so thank you. Any public comment on this item?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then you can go ahead.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to adopt the resolution and award the contract to NorCal Contractors in one shot?
And I'll second it.
All right, so that's made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember LaRoma Yose, and that's a roll call vote. That's with, that's the two, what comes out to the $2,310, whatever that, yeah, final number was. $2,310.
Councilmember Armandares is absent. Councilmember Rocco? Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Libra Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes. All right, moving on to agenda item 7.2. Award a contract to McKim Corporation for the fiscal year '22 citywide pavement maintenance project, number 22PW273, and approve a project expenditure of $4,518,787. Go ahead, Daryl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Our other big project for tonight that we've been waiting for. Little background here, on March 8th of 2021, Public Works Engineering staff presented an introduction to the city's five-year street repair program. On September 13th of '21, council approved the city's five-year street repair program. And for fiscal year 2022, project will provide pavement preventative maintenance and rehabilitation of 149 street segments this round. Each treatment, just to kind of give you a metric here, each treatment approves a PCI minimum of 10 points for just a slurry seal and all the way up to a value of 100 on some of the thicker seals. So as we go through, there's a variation. We were at a previous 62 at our previous devaluation. This is going to bump us up at least a couple of points, maybe even more as we incorporate all the new streets that have been built in town. Here's a quick map to show you some of the segments in town. We're going to be all over town doing these different treatments. We tried to place a lot of them adjacent to one another, so they weren't completely spread throughout town, but there is still a pretty good spread of different areas of town. Background here, project includes several components. One option we're going to be doing is milling the streets down and replacing them with AC pavement. Pavement resurfacing can include slurry seals, micro-surfacing, asphalt rubber cape seals, and some micromilling as well. Included in the project is restriping throughout town, which will include bike lanes and what have you. Traffic signal loop replacements, those will be damaged or need to be replaced over time. Installation of ADA-compliant curb ramps, whenever we improve a road, we need to make sure that the ADA compliance is happening at the same time. And then we'll be adjusting utilities like the manholes degrade, so you don't have that big bump as you drive over them. Our bid process included an advertisement in San Jose Mercury News and our city website just this past month, in March, March 9th to be accurate. Bids opened March 28th, and our staff received four bids for this project. The lowest responsive local bidder, McKim Corporation. Project costs, the base bid came in at $3.9 million. Bid alternatives included, number one was $177,000. The total bid together is $4.1 million with a contingency of 10%, 410,000. So the total bid plus contingencies equates to $4.5 million. The funding source for this project is our general fund, SB1 monies, Measure B monies, and gas tax funds. These sources, more specifically, look like this. $1.6 million from our general fund, $900,000 from SB1 funding, $900,000 from Measure B funding, and the remainder from our gas tax fund, $1.1 million, for a total of $4.5 million. Recommendation tonight to council is to adopt a resolution for the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year 2122, and appropriate proposed expenditure amendments. Also to award a contract to McKim Corporation in the amount of $4,107,988.27 with an additional project contingency of $410,798, for a total construction cost of $4,518,787 for the fiscal year 2020 citywide pavement maintenance project, number 22-PW-273, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. And we're here to answer any questions on this project.
Thank you, Daryl. I'm going to start with Councilmember LaRoma Yose.
Daryl, thank you again. You know, I know that when people see that map with all of the red lines, first thing they're going to look for is, you know, their street or their neighborhood, and they're going to say, wait a second, you know, I've got the worst street in front of my house, and why isn't mine on there? And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that a lot of the work that we do is preventative in nature, because then that kind of saves more money down the road. So sometimes, it's a question of preventing a road from getting even worse, which actually saves money. Is that, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. It's more of a triage, you know, treatment, you know, which ones can we save and which ones are gone, we just have to move on to the ones we can save.
Understood, and I think it's just helpful if we all remember that as we look at a map like that, because I know those questions are coming.
Right, we're already getting those questions.
I believe it, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tovar, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, and then, Daryl, I know you touched on it a little bit, but I just want to make sure the public knows, the McKim Corporation is from Gilroy.
That's what I understand, is that, that's correct.
Yeah, I just want, I want everybody to know, the money's staying in Gilroy.
Yes, sir.
Beautiful, thank you.
Councilmember Marks?
So piggybacking on what Peter was saying, what about those people who do live on a really bad street like Prince Valley? What would, what would you like to say to them when they see that their street is way beyond repair? Will it ever get fixed, or will it just continually get worse? Because you're right, we're hearing it, too, from the people. How come I'm not on this list?
Absolutely, that's a great question. There are a few streets out there with that same situation. We will be getting to those throughout the five-year program, but you can imagine the cost of those are astronomically more than the others. Perhaps we can do 30 of these streets with some type of a treatment, and one of those at the same cost. So we have to weigh those as we look at the entire community. What's the best bang for the buck for the entire community as we eventually get to each one of these? We will eventually get to each one of them. There's several others like that, too, that will be in the program.
Is there a priority list for those that are really bad?
There is a priority list. Some of them are so bad, to be honest, they're at the bottom of the list because there's no saving them. We're going to have to grind them almost completely out and replace them. So doing that this year or next year, even though it's uncomfortable, the price isn't much difference, whereas we can save tens of years on multiple streets by small types of applications today, so.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think it was in 2018 or 2019, because I have it in my files, too, where, and anybody from the public can ask this, too, of Public Works, a list of all of our streets and what their score is. And, you know, a score that's like Prince Valley between second and third, as I recall, is 20, and this is on a zero to 100, it's very bad, it's not going to get fixed. And LuChessa is, you know, four, you know, or something, something really, really bad. But anybody can find out what those numbers are so that you just have a better understanding. It's not that they're being overlooked, it's that we don't have the money to fix something that we've gone way too many years not addressing. And that's what this is right here, is our effort to stop that cycle and to add money to our street maintenance so that we can improve the streets that we can. Whether or not we increase our pavement condition index is beside the point. It's we don't want to keep dropping, so that eventually, as we keep, if we keep this funding cycle going, which is what I'm hoping we do, we will eventually be able to get to something that the entire city is going to be able to take a nice, heavy sigh and say, wow, we're at least, we can see that we're getting somewhere. So that's the goal. I would encourage everyone who's curious about a particular street to find out what that street's score is, and then you'll know why it's kind of beyond help right now at this time. Okay, hearing nothing? Yeah, I know. Okay, I'm going to go to public comment.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
No speaker cards, okay. Then closing public comment.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, again, this would be a motion to adopt a resolution and award the contract to McKim. I just asked for it and closed it. Yeah, okay. All right, so I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Marks, roll call.
Councilmember Armandares is absent. Councilmember Rocco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember, Councilmember Libra Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes. All right, item 7.3. Approval of a first amendment to the agreement with Honeywell Building Solutions in the amount of $329,725 to extend the HVAC maintenance services agreement for an additional two years. And Walter, you're going to be giving us this report. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Walter Dunkle, the facility superintendent. Thank you for reviewing this agenda item. Honeywell currently provides HVAC services for numerous city facilities under a three-year agreement. This agreement has an option to extend for two years. We are currently happy with Honeywell's responsiveness and the quality of their service that they've been providing. Staff recommends that the existing agreement with Honeywell be extended for two years. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Oh, all right, Councilmember Rocco. That's great, Noah.
Trying to be quick here for you guys.
Years ago, we approved putting new HVAC system in this building.
Years ago, we approved putting new HVAC system in this building, and I've asked about it for like the last two years. Why is it taking so long?
Well, we had, we had engineering done on it, so the engineers had to design every facet of, you know, what, what needs to be installed, where it needs to be installed, where every conduit would go, where every cooling, cooling line would go. So that, that work is complete. We're, we're working with a, with a contractor, looking at the, to see what steps we can take to move forward with that. We're looking into going forward with a, the possibility of going forward with an energy-saving initiative to lump it in with energy savings so that, you know, that we could, we could save, save money on our future electric bills with more efficient equipment. So we're, we're moving forward with that. I know it's not at the speed that you guys would like, but it is, it is moving forward.
This thing has probably over-doubled in price since we approved it. We need to do something about this, how long it takes to get these projects done. I mean, the generator, we proved that years and years ago, and even the street stuff, everything just takes so long, and it just costs us more and more money.
Do you have a suggestion?
See what we can come up with. I understand some of this stuff has to be done, but this is just outrageous.
All right, anyone else? All right, going to public comment.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, and I'll close the public comment period and come back to council. If there's no more comment, we can just vote. Oh, the motion has to be said out loud. Okay, someone has to make the motion. Oh, was it made on here? Okay, move, okay, the motion was made by Councilmember La Romoños and seconded by Councilmember Bracco. And Councilmember Tovar, it says you're the only one that hasn't voted. Okay.
Thank you.
Are we good?
Can you announce the vote?
That passed by five? All right. Okay. Thank you, Walter. Item eight, public hearings. Tentative map application to subdivide approximately 2.88 acres for buildout of the Palomino Phase Two neighborhood of the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan. Before I go to Melissa's report, I'd like to ask council members if they have any ex parte communications to disclose regarding this item. I do not? Okay, none. All right, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Glen Loma group is before you this evening requesting approval of the second phase of the Palomino neighborhood in the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan area. This is tentative map application TM 2105. Before I get into the specific details of the map itself, I just want to orient you as to its location. This is Santa Teresa Boulevard with Eagle Ridge to the west. The site is this site that's in pink, and so Ubers Creek Park Preserve is on the north side. On the south side is the first phase of the Palomino neighborhood in Glen Loma Ranch, and then the McCutcheon Creek neighborhood. To the west is the Olive Grove neighborhood, also in Glen Loma Ranch, and then to the east is Ascension Soler Sano Middle School. And this is, this is Club Drive, Club Drive and Granache Way. So going to the details of the map, the four lots that you see here that are in the darker ink are the lots that are proposed to be created through this subdivision. This is about a 2.88 acre site. Again, it's at the corner of Granache Way and Club Drive, and there's also a new private street that's proposed called Friedrich Place that would actually provide the service to this site. This site will also include a large detention basin. The detention basin will serve this entire portion of the specific plan. And as I mentioned, this is the second phase of the Palomino neighborhood. The first phase is this area that you see that's in the lighter ink. This was approved in 2017 via tentative map application TM 1601. And this first phase includes an open space area, Lot B9, that's about .4 acres, that will also serve as open space to this project site. This open space area not only will provide recreational amenity, but it will provide a trail that will provide connectivity from a future city park that will be adjacent to McCutcheon Creek. It will provide access from the McCutcheon Creek neighborhood through the Palomino neighborhood, first phase and second phase, up to Granache Way, which will provide a access for students going to school. The lots range in size from 3,600 to 4200 griffy. They will, because they back onto this detention basin, there will be masonry walls on all of the portions of the lots that actually back onto the basin or slide onto the basin, and that's because the basin is a utility, it's not a recreational area. Now, you'll see in the specific, this is a map of the specific plan area, and this is the Palomino neighborhood here, this is the portion that we're looking at this evening. This is Ascension Soler Sano Middle School. This is the first phase of Palomino and McCutcheon Creek, and then Santa Teresa. So you'll see that there's an asterisk in this area in the specific plan, and that is because there is a potential commercial opportunity site that has the potential to locate on the McCutcheon Creek, Palomino, or Olive Grove neighborhoods. And there's no requirement that a commercial development be constructed in this, in one of these neighborhoods, it's just an opportunity that's available for developers should a developer want to come forward. So far, no developers have come forward with a proposal to construct any of these sites with commercial development. And the applicant had a, a commercial real estate broker assess the site and submitted a letter that is part, was part of the planning commission packet. And there were four reasons listed for the reason that this site isn't attracting any commercial developers. One is because it's mid-block with, mid-block with low traffic volume. A second is because it has difficult ingress and egress. A third is that there's no anchor tenant that would attract customers. And finally, the proximity to the middle school would eliminate a convenient store use, which is likely the only type of use that would go in a location like this. So the conclusion of the commercial broker is that the site is not suitable for commercial use, and staff agrees with that conclusion. And because of this, we do recommend allowing the project to move forward with the residential development. This site is served by Gilroy Unified School District, and specifically, the schools that serve the site are Los Enemis Elementary School, Ascension Soler Sano Middle School, and Gilroy High School. It's estimated that there will be one student generated from this project, and the schools have sufficient capacity to serve that student. We did present this project to the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission in October of 2021. The commission did not have any specific comments related to this project. That concludes my presentation with regard to this tentative map, but I did, because we are moving along quite quickly with the Glen Loma Ranch specific plan, I did want to give you an update on the development status of the specific plan area. And what we are anticipating for full buildout of the portion of the specific plan area under Glen Loma's control is 1,275 units. And the reason I, I'm saying under Glen Loma's control is that there is the Olive Grove neighborhood that the school district has purchased, and they're holding it in inventory in case they want to build a school there. So I'm not including that property in these numbers, these figures that I'm going to give you. So we estimate that there will be 1,275 units constructed in the portion of the specific plan under Glen Loma's control. And of that, of those units, the city council has given entitlement approval for 1,078 units. And I want to distinguish between an entitlement approval and a building permit approval. Entitlement is the planning discretionary approval, like what you're doing this evening, that allows the developer to move forward to the engineering division to get a final map, and then on to the building department to get building permits. So they've, the developer has received 1,078 units for entitlement approval. They have pulled 904 building permits. So that means that there are 371 building permits remaining to complete buildout of this specific plan area, at least the portion under Glen Loma's control. And I just want to point out which neighborhoods, you know, where we are specifically with each neighborhood. So I'm going to start with neighborhoods that are built. We have Petite Sarah, Vista Bella, The Grove and Lucesa, and Mataro, and those are all on the southern end of the specific plan area. Those are built. In addition, Montonico, Olive Grove, and Home Ranch are built. Now, there are several portions that are currently under construction, and those include, in the town center, there's the town center townhouse units, as well as the below-market-rate apartment units. In addition, in the center portion of the specific plan area, there's the Nebiolo neighborhood, which is the area right here, right in the center. There's the Glen, and there's the first phase, the Malvasia neighborhood. Those are already, those are under construction as we speak. And those are the only units under construction. But we do have two other neighborhoods that have received full entitlement, and that is the Palomino neighborhood and the McCutcheon Creek neighborhood. Those are in the final map process through engineering, and I would expect that you would be seeing a final map probably in the next couple of months on that. And then the remainder of the projects consist of those that are currently in process. So we currently have this Palomino tentative map that you're considering this evening, those four lots. And then we also have another tentative map that is at the planning commission level, and it's expected to go to the planning commission in June. So if it stays in that schedule, it will be coming to you in July. And that is tentative map TM 2005, and that is for the, it's right in the center here, the Rocky Knoll Canyon Creek and Malvasia Phase One projects, and that's 123 units. And what that would leave, if you entitled those units in July, what that would have really remained for entitlement would be just this portion, a small portion of the town center property that it does include the fire station, and it also includes, we estimate, a 12,000 square foot retail space, and then 75, oh, sorry, 70 residential units, and then the Olive Grove neighborhood that's under the school district's control. So I'm just going to give you a little visual of what this looks like then. So this is the whole, this, everything you see that's colored is the specific plan area. So what's in orange is built, what's in blue is currently being constructed. The areas in pink are in the entitlement process, and the areas in white, we have not received any submittals on. And the planning commission considered this tentative map at their March 10th meeting, and they recommended approval with the resolution that's before you this evening by vote of six to zero to one, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, would everybody like to queue up if you have questions? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa, thank you, thank you for that report. And, and, you know, you mentioned that this sort of surplus for a potential school in the future. But given, you know, obviously where the school district is currently, and many of the schools in California, obviously, are in the same position because people are starting to move out. What is the plan, the near, you know, not a new school, but what if this project brings in overcrowdedness in the schools?
If the schools become overcrowded?
Yeah.
Oh, well, then the school district would just, would build that school, that...
No, wait, wait, that, building a school is two, 10, five, 10 years down the road. I'm saying, what's the plan in the next two to five years if that's, if that's the case?
Well, they've closed Antonio Del Bono, so they could open that up again. And I, there's a lot of excess capacity.
Right.
I, they're going to, I think, have a lot of fair warning before the capacity increases. So I think that's where they would start.
Okay, because, because you said Antonio Del Bono, which, which I'm very familiar with, but those individuals, children that live in that area would now be bused to Antonio Del Bono, right?
That's, well, yeah, I mean, I don't know how the school district would set their attendance boundaries, but I, they would have to look at that, how they would want to serve those students.
And I bring this up because, again, that might not be the case, but I think we should be prepared for that if, if indeed it comes to that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no others, I'm going to ask, ask my questions then. First of all, reminding council, we have a meeting with the school board, you know, next Monday, and Jimmy and I meet with them once a month, too, and I, they're still very, I think they would love to have the problem of too many students, because that's not been the case at all. Birth rates are, you know, everybody just has dogs now. Kids are like, I think of the past. So, right, so we absolutely do need to watch that, but I think that is something we, yeah, work well with the school district on. Melissa, you mentioned the retail space that's going in, I don't know if you want to go back to the colored, yeah, that one, the retail space that's going in at the, at the top of the bottom portion of the red, right? But earlier, you talked about, can you show me on this map, where is the site that is not suitable for commercial development?
It's the site that's under, well, this commercial opportunity site could go on, this is the site that you're looking, considering this evening?
The four, right, the four homes.
Right, so it could go in this area, it could have gone in the McCutcheon Creek or Palomino neighborhoods, any of the, either of those neighborhoods, or it could also go in the Olive Grove neighborhood. And previously, the council determined that it wasn't suitable for the McCutcheon Creek or Phase One neighborhoods that are one of, that are two of the three that could be considered. So now, the only neighborhoods that are remaining for potential commercial sites would be this four lot that's under consideration tonight, or the Olive Grove neighborhood.
Okay, well, what I'm getting at is if a commercial development was supposed to have been, was it supposed to?
No.
No, okay.
It's, it's, no, there's no requirement for a commercial site to go there. It was just held in reserve in case a developer wanted to come in.
Wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I don't need to worry about whether or not deciding that it's not suitable was something that was based on things that should have been known, that nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
So it would have been unsuitable all along.
Yes.
Okay, okay, but it's not required, and so that's fine.
It's not required.
Okay. That's really all I have. Thank you. It's been through planning commission, we saw that, so, okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions of council members, I'll go to the public. Any public comment on this item?
Would you mind opening public hearings right now?
Oh, right, I need to say it more formally. Opening the public hearing at 7:33 PM.
I receive no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, so I'm closing at 7:33 PM. All right, possible action. Need a, a motion? Okay. Councilmember Bracco made a motion to approve resolution, to adopt resolution approving tentative map TM 2105, seconded by Councilmember La Romoños, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Almaderis is absent. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember La Romoños?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, so that passed unanimously with two, zero, two absent. Okay, item nine is unfinished business, we have none. Item 10 is introduction of new business. 10.1 recreational vehicle tow policy. This is going to be presented by Captain Juan Roca?
Rocha.
Rocha. In Italian, it's Roca.
It is.
I keep getting back and forth, yeah. I'm sorry.
Right, we have, Madam Mayor, we have determined that Councilmember Bracco does not have a conflict for this kind of discussion. Certain other matters involving the towing company, that could be a conflict, but not this.
Okay, so we have no conflict, and go ahead, Captain Rocha.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So my presentation is regarding the recreational vehicle tow policy. Give you some background, as we all know, this is a council legislative item from fiscal years 22 and 23. My presentation is informational only, and just giving you guys an update on our current practices. We are not recommending any changes at this point, and just to give you some numbers on how many RVs we're actually towing. In 2020, we towed 15 RVs. 2021, we towed 16 RVs. And this year so far, we have towed a total of two RVs. So in order for us to tow these RVs, there are certain codes or authorities in the state and then within the city that allows us to tow these, the RVs. I'll start out with the California Vehicle Code first. 22651K of the California Vehicle Code states that a vehicle parked or left standing on a public roadway for 72 or more consecutive hours, it may be considered abandoned and be towed per a local ordinance, which we do have, it's 15.67 of the Gilroy City Code. 2265101A states that a vehicle may be towed if the registration has been expired in excess of six months. 22669A, a vehicle may be towed if an officer has reasonable grounds to believe the vehicle is abandoned. For this section, we do give a 10-day warning to the owners of the vehicles or RV. And then 22669D, the Vehicle Code states that a vehicle on public road that lacks an engine, transmission, wheels, or doors, et cetera, may be towed at that moment. an engine, transmission, wheels, or doors, et cetera, may be towed at that moment. And now I'll touch on the Gilroy City Codes. 1562A of the Gilroy City Code states that it's unlawful to park oversized vehicles on public or private property in excess of 48 consecutive hours in a 14-day period. Vehicles can receive a parking citation for this City Code. And then 15.67, it states that it's unlawful to park a vehicle on any street or alley for more than, for more than a period of 72 consecutive hours, and the vehicles may be towed per 22651K of the Vehicle Code. You can also issue a parking citation for this Gilroy City Code.
Captain, can I interrupt you for just one second? I thought I heard you say unlawful on private property. You meant private street, right?
Correct.
Okay, private street.
Yes. So what are, I'll discuss our current practices. Most of our contacts, I would say 98, 99% of our current contacts as of today with those staying in RVs are complaint driven. And what I mean by that is, you know, the interactions that we're having with these individual staying RVs are due to the community members calling in complaints and reporting, you know, that the RVs are either in violation or being, or nuisance to their community. So we're, we're not out proactively contacting individuals in RVs. The toes of RVs are enforced on a case-by-case basis, and again, we're not proactively towing RVs as we speak. The city does pay $1,000 per tow for RVs, and it might seem like a high amount, but when you take into consideration the labor of the tow driver, wear and tear on the tow truck, the fact that they got to remove all the fluids from the RVs, which are, some are biohazard and have to be discarded in a special manner, there's really little to no profit being made by, by the tow companies for this, for this fee. And then on the last point, our two quality of life officers are, are actually out there working with owners of RVs and those staying in the RVs and offering available resources within the city and the county. And then I do have some examples of the RVs that we're actually towing, and these are completely abandoned RVs that we're able to tell that they're abandoned, no one's staying in them when they're being towed. And with that, I'll take any questions, comments?
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll go to council first, and anybody want to put up on the screen? Otherwise, I'm going to ask questions. Nobody else has a question? Okay, you gave us some stats, 15 in 2020, 16 in 2021, and two in 2022. I apologize for not asking this in advance, if you don't know the answer, it's okay, but do you know how many of each of those toes were with current registration?
I don't know the number. I know that it's very common for these RVs to be expired.
Yeah, or to not have license at all. I just wondered how many, yeah, if, if, how often does it, is it that we are having to tow something that actually has current registration on it? Don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
Okay. And then for, for RVs that are parked on, on city streets because the owner who lives in the house on that same street doesn't want to park it somewhere else, do we put a notice on those two after 72 hours if someone else on the street complains about it and then tow if it's still there, or?
Uh, we try to gain cooperation from the owner. We try to make contact and advise them of the potential violation. You know, we do have the ability to issue a parking citation, and then last resort would be towing the vehicle. But we try to get, usually we gain cooperation from the owner.
Okay, so I wonder how we do that? I got a letter from a seven-year-old saying his mom keeps saying that she can't see because this RV is parked right where it blocks and it, and he says it stays there all the time. And I went, I actually went to the house and asked the neighbors and they said, yeah, it is always there. So I guess if, if, if neighbors are letting it be, they're complaining, but to themselves, what can you do? But if they would call, then we can let that owner know that you can't do that.
Correct.
That's a public street and you're not allowed to park a vehicle that size on the public street. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barco?
Yes, I could, I can tell you that I don't think I've ever had an abandoned motorhome that was registered. In fact, in most cases, they're a real problem because the, whoever's sleeping in it doesn't own it. It's went through so many hands and they haven't been registered in 10, 15 years. And one thing I wanted to correct the officer is the towing company doesn't get $1,000. That goes, most of it goes to Pacific Coast for the recycling to get rid of it. And people need to understand, these are not your average tow. These motorhomes are full of human waste, needles. Our employees have to be really careful. They have to crawl underneath these things and pull drivelines, and this stuff is dripping out of them. It, it's, it's nasty. And then we have to store them in our, on our property until 15 days later when we can actually take it to the junkyard if it was deemed junk when, when it was towed. If not, we got to keep it for about 40 days. So that, and, and our police department goes way above and beyond. I have businesses in, in two other cities and they don't do what our police department does. Our police department works with people. They've worked with us, asked us to tow these motorhomes to someone's house that said they could park it there. So there, there's, I, I really haven't heard a whole lot of complaints from the homeless community that's in these motorhomes. They understand that, you know, you've been told for the last month to move it and you've been given opportunities to move it and you chose not to. It's on, it's on the person, so, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I'm going to go to public comment.
I have one speaker card, Madam Mayor, and it's from Vanessa Ashford.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify, you're not recommending any changes to the current policy for the next year?
Please direct your question here, okay? What's the?
Well, that's, he's the one that presented it, so...
What's the question?
They're not recommending any changes to the current policy by the police department as far as towing RVs.
That's what I heard.
Okay, so I would completely support that. I have been interacting with the quality of life officers and it, as a community member, it saddens me to see these dilapidated RVs that are on our city streets, right? It's an eyesore and it can be a traffic hazard, but what saddens me more is that we as a city aren't doing better. We can't do better. We don't have housing, we don't have shelters. Unfortunately or fortunately, we've come across four families with young children living in these RVs thanks to the quality of life officers who have been for two to four years each and have not been able to get any services through any service provider in the city. We are working on a daily basis with the county to connect people with resources. If a quality of life officer calls, the nonprofit I work for, we try to get that family connected, but we don't have resources. We don't, so if an officer calls and says, I have a family here and they don't have anywhere to stay, we don't have anywhere in Gilroy to tell them to stay. The family shelter is in San Jose and it's a 30-plus day waiting period. So I would fully support allowing the families to stay in their RVs for now. What, what doesn't make sense to me is that they are continuing to issue three-day citations so people think that they're going to get towed in three days, but the policy is that they will not be towed. But it's like a kid that you keep saying, if you keep doing that, I'm going to spank you, I'm going to spank you. And then you don't, and all of a sudden, one day you do. I'm not sure why we continue to give a three-day notice or even the $43 parking citation to people that we know can't or won't move it and that we're not going to enforce. It just seems counterproductive, so that's...
Thank you. Okay, no others?
No others, Madam Mayor.
Okay, back to council. Generate a question for me. Are, are, are we not towing, I mean, are we sometimes towing and sometimes not towing or are we using the same criteria to tow or not tow?
We do use the same criteria, but it is a case-by-case basis or scenario. You know, if we, we try to get cooperation, I know that our, some examples is our quality of life officers have interacted with some of these individuals where maybe their registration was not paid for or broken down and they work with some of these community-based organizations to provide some financial assistance to them so they can take care of their issues and move along. So those are some examples, but really the, the towing of RVs are, are on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and are you getting any, I mean, wonderful, if things are working fine the way they are, then that's how they should stay, but are you getting, are there any problems coming from residents of not, of, of the decision that is not to tow?
We do get a lot of complaints. Usually, a lot of times, it's the same people complaining because nothing's, and they believe nothing's being done. And they call and complain and we'll go out there and issue a citation or tag it, but then, you know, the RV's still there a couple of days later and they call back.
Are these runnable, do they drive, these RVs? Do they actually move?
Some do, some don't. It just really...
So some are inoperable?
Yeah.
And they're on the street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unfortunately, some of them have kids and families in them, so we try to take a compassionate approach.
Understand. Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
No.
No, not from there. If you'd like to fill out a speaker card. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, wow, we're at item 11, city administrative reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two small items before I get to the agendized item. One, I want to, I want to recognize that last week was National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is also known as Dispatcher Weeks. It's a group of individuals that we don't give enough credit to at times, and I felt bad because we do recognize public works, recognize a lot of things, but we were remiss not to recognize our dispatchers. And they actually have a great hashtag, if you want to check them out on Instagram, it's called Headset Heroes, which I think is pretty clever, but also quite appropriate. So thank you to them. The one thing I wanted to point out too in the discussions of tonight, in the last few weeks, council has either approved or received approximately $10.7 million in infrastructure funding, which translates is, we're going to tear this town apart. And so if you are concerned about streets being torn up, disruptions of business, dust, dirt, that's going to happen. We recognize that, and so we are right now developing an, an extensive communication plan for you that will mirror very much like First Street. First Street was not perfect, but it did go pretty well. And we spent a lot of time working with our businesses, our residences, our residents, letting them know that your stuff's going to be torn up for a while, but if you want it fixed, that's what it's going to take. So I'm going to apologize right now for the dirt, the mess we're not going to make, but I'm not going to apologize for fixing the things you wanted us to. That's what happens when you pump in millions of dollars into infrastructure, which I'm, I'm glad the city is doing, and I know you'll appreciate it when the road is smooth and that the alleys are cleaned up and all those items are fixed, but bear with us and if you have any complaints or concerns, you know where to find us and we're here to help. So just warning you now. Lastly, I want to let the council know that the city applied for, just last week, for a RACE grant, which is Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. This is a $1.5 billion federal grant program that provides infrastructure funding for communities, and the city applied for funding for the 10th Street Bridge. The overall project cost is estimated at $24.4 million. We asked for an 80% grant of $19.5 million, which means the city would have to fund almost $5 million of the project. We would be happy to have to solve that problem with you, but we, we wanted to let council know that there are a lot of things that we apply for, we don't always get, and this is a big one, this is one of the biggest grants we've applied for, and we expect to have a ruling by August, middle of August. I want to thank all of our staff for doing the work on this. They, they worked hard and it's hard to do these things when you don't know if you're going to get it or not, but we've seen in the past that it, you, you know you won't get it if you don't ask. So I'm really proud of our staff for taking that on. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. That's excellent news, everyone. We have, that grant has been applied for, $19.5 million for the 10th Street Bridge. All right, council, any questions of, of Jimmy before I move on? Okay, city attorneys reports?
Right, I have no report, but I can introduce the closed session if you would like.
Sure.
Okay. The next item 13 is Conference with Labor Negotiators, Collective Bargaining Units pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Gilroy City Code 17A114. Collective bargaining units are ASME Local 101, General and Supervisory, representing employees affiliated with ASME Local 101; Local 2805 IAFF Fire Unit representing Gilroy Firefighters; Gilroy Management Association representing mid-management employees; unrepresented exempt employees, confidential department heads and council-appointed; unrepresented confidential non-exempt employees; part-time temporary seasonal employees, hourly and exempt. The negotiators are Jimmy Forbes and Leanne McPhillips. The anticipated issues are wages, hours, benefits, working conditions, memorandums of understanding, City of Gilroy and Gilroy Firefighters Local 2805; City of Gilroy and ASME Local 101; General and Supervisory Units; City of Gilroy and Gilroy Management Association, GMA. The next step is to receive public comment, and then you do not need to take a vote to go into closed session, but in closed session, the first thing to do is take a vote, and that vote is a reportable action. In other words, a vote to remain in closed session, of course.
All right, so the time is 7:52 with that, and I'm going to open a public comment.
I received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and closing public comment, and I will wait for everything to shut down. All right.